So are we... Okay. The Selectmen's Meeting of July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen has already been called to order. We had a non-public session that we needed to address first thing. Adam, we're all set, right?
Yep, you're live.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda would be Mr. Devlin. Could you come on up to the mic, please? Okay, just pull that microphone close, close to you.
Will do.
Thank you. What can we do for you?
Well, I'm Dick Devlin, this is my wife Denise, we've been longtime town residents for thirty-nine years. We owned the old Ed Warrington place for a long time, and that was an experience in itself, three-hundred-year-old house. On August of two thousand and six, we bought the three Cardinal Lane property that you're looking at right there.
Okay.
And I did put this together, hopefully to save us some time and get through this quickly, you can look at this stuff later on. This is the house that it appears today, when we bought it, the garage wasn't there. The short history of the problem is that, uh, late in nineteen ninety-nine, the previous owner, uh, submitted a site plan and got approval for, and built, a two-story shed slash barn, whatever you want to call it, which I've got a picture of a little bit later on, three or four pages along in here, which, it's a bit of an unprepossessing, looked like a sugar shack, but on the inside, uh, it's all two-by-six, two-by-twelve with a beautiful concrete pad. It's wired, it has propane heat, so it was a somewhat better, uh, when I first saw it, we said, "That thing has got to go, we're going to tear it down," and, in fact, that's why we did build a garage right away, it was useless as a garage. If you go to page two, you can see there's a new updated survey of the, of the lot, which was just completed.
When you bought the property, was it surveyed?
It wa- say that again, Mark.
When you bought the property, was it surveyed?
It was, we had a survey plot, yes, I recall that part. We didn't survey it ourselves at that time. We had a, a map, which, which was pretty much close to this, a little bit, actually more of the building is on town land than in the lot part that we started off with. But anyway, about one day before the closing, both the mortgage title people and the home inspection people reported to our attorney that we have a possible problem, and that there's a building that is encroaching apparently on the land next door, which in fact is the town land. Uh, we had, you know, our attorney looked at it and he said, "Well, you know, it's not the biggest problem in the world, why don't we take a little money from them off the price, in case the town later on says, 'You're going to tear that down, at least we've got some money to, to do that with.'" So we did that, closed on it, even knowing it wasn't encroached, encroached properly. Mortgage title people didn't have any problem with that, so we proceeded. Human nature being what it is, uh, we delayed doing this because it was an entanglement, and we began to fill up the place with junk, and it turned out to be a pretty useful building, that, uh, why, why stir up a sleeping tiger? But we're planning to move now, we have, we're going to sell the place, and very reluctantly we're going to move, uh, we feel we need to at this stage of our life, and we've got to confront this problem and resolve it, and that's why we're here, we're hoping we can get you fellows to adjudicate a reasonable solution to the situation. I have included, just for your own perusal, in the back, there's the site plan that was submitted in nineteen ninety-nine, and there's the building permit, uh, copied from the folder that was in the, uh, town office downstairs. So, that's, that's for you to look at and think about it, uh, later, you've got a lot to do this evening, so get on with this. I'm coming up with what I, I, there's three proposals, two of which are, uh, suggested by the surveyor and who has provided me with a, a, a lot survey reflecting what these things would look like, these, uh, but the first one, I think, that, uh, certainly came to our mind, was an easement, and the value of an easement being that it's simple, and doesn't require attorneys, and, uh, it re- it requires the offended landowner to accept it, and to grant to the people who built the structure or the owners of it now, which is us, what is called a beneficial ownership, so you know this better than I do, uh, the town retains full ownership of the property, full, there was no need to record any new deeds or anything, so that, that, the thing that attracts Mrs. Devlin and I to that is that, uh, there are no more, we've always spent a couple of thousand bucks on, on the surveys, uh, to rectify a situation that we did not cause, but we're, we're, we have to de- we have to deal with it. So, our attraction to that is rather obvious, um, but it's a fairly commonly utilized mechanism for settling disputes like this in the state of New Hampshire and everywhere else. The second suggestion is on, uh, Proposal B, and in the back of your packets, I've got a condensed view of Plan One and Plan Two, which is provided by the surveyor, and this plan involves, uh, an exchange of equal square footage along the shared boundary. If you took the twenty-foot setback, which nobody seems to have bothered with up until now, and used that as a guideline, uh, we're able to carve off about one-point-three acres of land, which would, would properly situate us on our property with a twenty-foot setback to the town land. And if you continued that line crossing our footage and heading to the back of our property, that creates an equal triangle of land, one-point-three acres, uh, and the suggestion is, that's a simple way to do it, it's, it's, it's easy to understand, it has some negatives for Mrs. Devlin and I, but that could be our problem, but, but it is a negative, and that involves, we have to, you have to sell us your parcel of land, one-point-three acres, we have to sell you our parcel of land, that's two sets of closing costs, recording fees, et cetera, et cetera, so it's a little bit of a, uh, uh, a money problem for us to accept that, we do if we have to, it is a, uh, it is a reasonable solution. The third solution, and the last one, is a purchase of a small piece of the town property, sufficient enough to satisfy the twenty-foot setback, and that's the, uh, I think it's, I think I put it down, Plan Two or Plan B, I don't know which, I've, I've got the map also in the back for you, that you can look at, but it's the one-point-three acres of land, uh, that's also simple, it's straightforward, we can all understand what it is. I think the negative part of this might turn out to be, what is the value of that land? It's, it's listed right now, it's assessed at a hundred and nine thousand, the four-point-eight-eight acres, this is one-point-three, point-one-three acres of that, uh, one could argue that the real price of that, value of that land is somewhere between a hundred and nine and nothing because it hasn't sold in thirty-nine years, so nobody's knocking themselves down to take the piece. It's also, it, it, it's a very wet piece of land, I walked out in April when the leaves were still down so we could see, and in the back, on pages six and seven, I've got pictures, there's two plumes of water that show up in the watershed maps, and, uh, I mean, if you just, you just look at the photographs, you can see, there's probably two-thirds of the land looks like that. One is the, coming in from the east side, which is Cardinal Road, the other comes in from the top of the property up behind my house. Uh, now, granted, this was in a wetter time of the year, but, but I can tell you that probably six or seven months of the year, it looks like this, I don't know what the value of that property is unless you want to raise ducks or catfish farm or something like that, but, but it's, it's pretty undesirable land, so I think the, the negative aspect of buying a small piece of the town property to satisfy you folks, uh, it's just going to be hard to set that price. We can take a whack at it, but, uh...
So essentially you get...
Yeah.
Essentially, it's twelve, twelve-by-eleven, that's actually physically on the town property, right, twelve-by-eleven?
Twelve by, close to eleven.
Right.
So, so you're on the town property, twelve-by-eleven?
That's true, but I'm assuming that you're going to enforce the twenty-foot setback, and, uh, I put that into my thoughts, anyway, yeah.
My, my issue with this, on the town's behalf, is that we sent someone out there to, when the, when the concrete was poured, for the, the base of the building, the permit was issued.
But the permits issued based on what they said on the page before?
Yeah, based on these setbacks.
That's what the permit's based on.
Town then take responsibility...
It says the closest they were to the line was forty-two feet. Usually, when it's close, um, at least nowadays, they require a survey.
Um, that's why I did the survey, no matter what I did with this property, and what planning, what board I went to here, uh, the new, I think it's a state statute, that in fact it has to be, we had to be working with a new, fresh, updated survey, and I've been trying to get them to come to the house for two months, and they finally got, got to me two weeks ago.
So, so, when you closed originally on the property, how much did the seller reduce the price by? Four thousand? And that was when?
That was August of two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, thirteen years ago?
I don't want to get too detailed here, but they asked for an earliest closing, we were supposed to close on September twenty-fourth, Mrs. Devlin and I were booked in for a trip to see the relatives in Ireland from the first to the fifteenth, we're three thousand miles away when my son called and said, "You know, we have a problem." He, my son being the attorney, and, uh, so we, we, it didn't seem to be too much of an issue at the time, so, and we, and we did like the house, so we moved, moved ahead with it, figured we'd figure it out some way.
If, if we do the land swap, as you showed, which was planned, um, um, this second auction, you said, talked about two closings, why does it, can't they be done at the same time?
I'm only giving you my version, I'm not sure this is the total legal version, I just made the assumption, is it has to be two different sales of, of land here?
No, it could all be done at the same time, and it'd only occur the one closing cost, and then no one's losing anything, you're gaining your piece, and we're getting the same thing, so it keeps it clean, and it seems like you already had it surveyed because you have that...
Yeah.
So we're just going to put boundary markers in, it seems that's the easiest solution at the cost of a closing attorney.
Well, I can tell you, for, for that solution, the surveying is already done.
Yeah.
The fresh, the new survey, so...
I, I don't know how the others feel, but I think it's a, it's an even swap that gets you out of your situation, you already paid the cost for this survey, just got to pay for the closing attorney, which shouldn't be that much.
Since the town doesn't stand to gain anything by this, in other words, the net gain for each person is basically zero, what's wrong with an easement?
What's that again?
What would be wrong with just doing an easement, which really accomplishes...
I, I mean, the only thing about the easement is, I, I'd have concern about our liability, okay, because we're, I mean, it's a building that we own the land under it, and if somebody gets hurt in that building, um, I'd have concerns about that.
My understanding, Mark, is that the easement is executed with wording that says, "It cannot change from its current function without approval of the owners of the land." Its current function is storage, in other words, we want to do a bowling alley or, or, you know, something, uh, run a repair shop out of it, that can't be done, so your anxiety would only be about a continued use of what it is.
Well, I mean, now that we know about it, it's, uh, I mean, before, we did, and if something happened, then it'd be like, well, we didn't know it was on our property, that's not how it was represented, but if we, if we move forward knowing that it's on our property, I, I would just have to, I don't think that's the cleanest way to do it, that's for sure.
You know, when they went to the twenty-foot setback?
What's that?
When did they go to the twenty?
It's been twenty foot for ever, as far as I know.
As far as I can remember, it has.
So prior to...
I think the only one that changed was the front one, right, the front one ended up going further back.
So prior to, prior to ninety-nine, it was still twenty feet?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was in effect then.
Chief and I went out there, um, I'm in favor of either one or two, I, I wanted to see what the board felt, I mean, the lot is not, the lot that we own is not buildable. On the plan for the original development, way back when, they had planned on filling in the wetlands, good luck getting that happen today, so, um, you know, I think the value of that property is, is negligible, and I don't think we should have to sell them one. I think a lot line adjustment or an easement, you know, it's not like someone tried to sneak this building in there, there was a building permit applied for, and, you know, obviously some erroneous information was given, but it wasn't like it was done illegally, so I, I do feel there is some portion that the town does have on that.
You think the town has some liability on the permit that it issued?
Not liability, but it's, someone was confused as to where the actual property line was, and the permit was issued.
But it wasn't the town that was confused, it was the owner that certified where the distance was.
Right.
Or it was signed off at the building.
Well, that doesn't matter, it's the, it's the homeowner that certified.
I mean, if this showed that it was on town property, and then we still issued the, the permit, then it would be on the town, okay, but if, if, if they're representing to us, where we don't have a requirement, I don't think, that, if somebody says they're forty feet from the lot line, we, we don't necessarily require people to survey it, if they say they're ten feet, or twenty feet, or relatively close to it, then nowadays, we ask them to give us a certified plot plan and locate it upon that property, but...
You're saying twenty years ago, you didn't have to do that?
Well, he, I don't even know that we would do it now, i- if, if it was forty-three feet from the lot line.
Well, when I built my garage, I can tell you, I was stood with right out there, measuring and doing the job, so...
Yeah. And how close were you, the garage, to the lot line?
Thirty-three.
Okay. I know when it is close, they, you know, a lot of times, he will require a certified plot plan. So, I, I mean, um, I don't think the town has...
Swap an equal square distance, so you...
No, I'm not saying liability, but I mean, this wasn't snuck in either, you know, it was a permitted building.
So, so are you saying just give them the land to clear it, or are you saying do the land swap?
I'm in favor of the first two options, I just wanted to see what the board felt on it, I, you know, I think the second one clears it up forever, you know, the setbacks are there, and the survey's done, and I mean...
Should be a simple thing.
Not knowing exactly, I mean, one thing that does concern me is if there is liability when you grant an easement.
Well, I'm, I would not be in favor of the easement, but I would be fine with the land swap.
I guess my opinion on it would be, back in two thousand and six, you put a value of four thousand dollars on it, you know, where...
The value was for the, we, we got a estimated cost from the construction company, what it would cost to share a town.
Yeah, but I mean, you, you had a gain of four thousand dollars because it's on the value, okay, and, and that was in two thousand and six, so thirteen years later, um, I, I guess my position would, would be that, uh, I, I would be in favor of you, uh, like I said, it was four grand, I mean, the town divesting that, that property, um, and, you know, to meet the setbacks and that stuff for four or five thousand dollars, which is originally in the ballpark, is actually what the seller paid for putting it in the wrong spot, right?
My concern is that, uh, in, in all of this, and not anticipating what your responses would be, is once I started getting up to, the two of us, an expenditure of around four thousand dollars, I might as well tear the damn thing down, and, uh, but it's a nice building, hate to do it, you know, I mean, rather than go into, if we went into, I have to buy this land, and we have to do another survey, and we have to pay attorney's fees, and saying, whoa, you know, we're at a stage of our life where we're not, uh, doing adventures and things with, uh, land purchases, but, but anyway, I, I hear what you're saying, and, um...
So if we do number two, we swap it equally, right, and what, what's the cost associated with, with your suggestion on number two, to swap, uh, equal footage, this plan here?
I don't know.
I think it's minimal, minimal, right?
The cost of the closing attorney, one closing attorney?
I absolutely don't know, I could, I said I could find out within a, you know, a few days, but...
I would make a motion to the board that we do an equal land swap, as, as shown in, uh, in this plan, there's not a plan numbered with it, but, but the equal amount of land swaps.
What's that?
Rich?
So my suggestion, put this on the table for at least a week, let's go over to look at the land, and I think we might be talking about drainage easement, I don't know, first time hearing about this tonight, like to take a look at, and try to work on by drainage easement.
Okay.
I would, what I would counter is, make, not even a motion, but just have Susan contact somewhere and find out what the closing cost for that would be, and then we can decide after, once we get word from Rich, if that's a, there's a drainage easement there.
If you do a simple lot line adjustment, it's going to be a good cost, so if the plan, represent the plan, you know, the whole process, present the plan, maybe we'll prove that it gets recorded.
It only costs recording fees.
Okay, even cheaper.
Can you tell me who he is, please? Road agent?
Rich St. Helier, the town road agent.
I know you. The mailbox. Say, uh, say that again, with the, the...
The simplest way, rather than do lawyers and closing costs, you've got a plan, you've got a survey, and you're done.
Yeah?
You have your, sort of your engineer draw two lines.
Yeah?
Which you've already done.
You had a figure.
You've already done that.
You go to the planning board, it's a lot line adjustment, and you get it approved, the plan gets registered, which I think costs fifty dollars for the plan, might be more, might be a hundred and fifty, but that's the cheapest way out for you, as long as the Selectmen are happy with it.
How long does that, is that a lengthy process?
Well, you've got to get on the agenda for the planning board, so I'm going to guess it's going to be probably, oh, you might be able to get on the August meeting, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
The chairman's right behind.
But we did go to the planning board person who's there, the day, he was the one that suggested the easement.
What I would do is get on the planning board's agenda as soon as you can, let us talk to the attorney, let Rich set, check the drainage, you know, in the meantime, but get on the agenda as soon as you can, so you, you beat that deadline, and then if anything happens that we say no, then you just cancel with the planning board, but that way you're at least on the agenda, instead of waiting for all the decisions at this end.
Our problem is not your concern, but we are losing our selling season here, and we had hoped that we would get a decisive answer, A, B, C, or your own, uh, tonight here, but I'm following everything, I'm not, in a lather over...
The second one, let him take it to the, to the planning board.
He wants to check the drainage.
Well, based upon approval for the planning board and the road agent, make it part of the motion.
You, you think it's worthwhile passing, passing the, the thing by town council, getting an opinion from them on it?
Good. Phil and I went out and walked it, right, right where you showed us where the land swap was going to be, there was no drainage.
Yeah, it's upland, I mean, there's no wet areas, I, I know you're...
I have no idea, so...
I know.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was...
No, I, I think...
We went out, we went out and walked it.
I've got the whole water table thing right here.
Was Dawn's motion seconded?
No.
How's the board feel about passing it by town council?
I would make a motion that we table this to the next meeting, barring the road agent being able to view the property, run it by town council, and see the exact process that needs to take place, whether it's a simple lot line adjustment, or not, whether there needs to be an actual closing of the land swap.
And, what, can he say he goes on the planning board agenda?
Well, that's up to him, if he wants to get this done sooner rather than later.
Just, I, I'd say, so, exactly what Rich said, go, get on the agenda, because if there's no issues with town council or Rich, it's a planning board, and I don't see them going long to debate it, it would, you know...
Well, we would still have to decide if that's the route we want to take, it's not the planning board decision to give up on the town land, but...
And optimistically, the planning board, optimistically for us...
Would do what?
Well, i- if, if, if the town agreed to do a, a lot line adjustment, then, then they would have a hearing on that and, uh, decide whether or not to allow it.
I think we could probably approve it at our next meeting in two weeks, and then the planning board could give their blessing, and you'll be done within, I don't know, when's the next meeting?
And by the look of this, you already have everything that you need for that.
Well, I, I hope that, but your meeting, next meeting is two weeks also.
What, what, what's the time constraint?
Well, we're just trying to get the house listed, we don't want to get into that until we, you know, in our own mind...
Get this squared away.
Moving in the right direction to resolve the problem.
Okay. So you don't actually have a deadline or anything, right?
It is our problem, not yours, but, uh, it's related, so...
Is it seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of, I guess it was, was, was the motion having town council look at it, have Rich look at it?
And town council, and look into the process needed.
Okay. All those in favor of, uh, that motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Post, extensions?
And Glenn has got some dates for them.
I just went and checked the dates for you on the, uh, to, to apply for planning board, for the August hearing, the deadline is, or was, July eleventh, because it's a public hearing process.
Okay, so we're past that, so the earliest would be September.
The next opportunity would be the third, whatever the third Tuesday is in September would be the, would be the planning board's meeting.
And then, to apply for that would be somewhere's around the deadline, August eleventh?
Let me check.
Roughly. Roughly.
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you're done, I need some clarity, okay, so we run by that town council. Rick comes out and checks that we're not interfering with water drainage, and then what? What are we going for finally?
Well, town council's going to give us a recommendation on if he likes any of those options, or, you know, and obviously he's going to be looking at it from the interest of the town.
Okay.
And give us a recommendation on one, Rich is going to see if by doing an exchange would create any kind of drainage issues. So he would be getting input back on that, and then I would like to think that we at least entertain what town council's opinion is.
And that all comes back to you.
Right, and then we make a decision, a motion is made and seconded and voted on as to how to proceed.
Thank you.
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth would be the deadline for the September meeting. Application, okay. So you wouldn't have to do, you wouldn't have to do anything, you know, you could talk to Susan, we could put them on the agenda for our meeting in two weeks, and that would still leave you a window of opportunity if it's to go the route of the planning board, if that's deemed to be the way the board wants to proceed.
Okay, I'm following all that.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay. We have a, so can you get this jacket to Summer and ask her an opinion on it? How he thinks the town best to proceed. Okay, we have some bid openings. This is for sealed bid for what surplus equipment? There's a bid from Porky Tractor Trailer. Bids on the following items, nineteen eighty-six American General tractor, looks like three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, another tractor, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, a two thousand and seven Fontaine thirty-foot flat trailer for three hundred and eight dollars, a two thousand and fourteen semi-trailer five-thousand gallon tanker for five hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents, a two thousand and fourteen Ford Explorer for three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and a Ford Taurus two thousand and thirteen, a hundred and thirteen dollars. What do you got, Phil?
KLG Development bids, three thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the nineteen eighty-six American General model M nine three one A two tractor odometer, seventy-one thousand miles. Also bid five thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the twenty-eleven American General model M nine three one A two tractor. Bid six hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the two thousand and seven Fontaine model thirty F T flat trailer. Six hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the twenty-fourteen R S M S M T R five-thousand gallon tank. Three thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the twenty-fourteen Ford Explorer all-purpose, and three thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the twenty-fourteen Ford Taurus, four-door sedan.
Bay Ridge Motors, Staten Island, New York, two thousand and fourteen Ford Explorer, sum of twenty-two fifty-seven, two thousand and thirteen Ford Taurus, sixteen fifty-seven.
Rich has, I mean, highest prices. All of it.
Okay. I guess these are, both of them are, well, some is police equipment and some of it is, is it all police or is it highway?
No, it's ten thirty-three, part of the surplus program. So two old police cruisers and surplus property from the government.
Okay. Can I grab that bid? You got an envelope that goes where, that has an address?
You want these to, it's on the back, on the top.
It's what?
His address is written on the back on that envelope.
KLG Development, okay.
So you want me to contact the high bidder, I have the titles.
Yeah, make a motion that we turn this over to Dawn and he can look them over. It does appear that KLG is, Development has the highest bids, I think on all items. And have him contact it and see if we can finalize, do we feel comfortable with the numbers? Okay. Prosecutor proposals? We got one from Coyle Law. Now, we put this out because we were through the Rockingham County's Attorney's Office, we were on like a shared program.
Yeah, yeah, shared prosecutor.
Of prosecutors, and they, did they dissolve that program?
They dissolved it for the Rockham County, for last sub-district ward area.
So the communities have had to obtain something else?
Yes.
Okay, this is prosecution contract proposal from, let me see, Attorney Kevin Coyle. What's that? Oh, is that, okay, there you go. Get a contract fee proposed of twenty-two thousand dollars payable in four equal quarterly payments. So- What's that? Police prosecutor proposal, this is from Burridge, Burley Law Office. As far as you can add, the parish town news. This proposal from Melissa, is it Burley, or Burley? Full compensation for all services provided I request the town council pay nineteen thousand dollars. What's that?
I would make a motion to authorize the police chief to review the proposals and come back with a recommendation.
Does anybody second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? This is Bay Ridge Motors, too.
No, well, I thought there was one that he pulled off the front of that big envelope, so I wanted to make sure that was actually went with that or-
I'll bring them back.
Okay. All American Assisted Living, next on the agenda. Maybe send us a report?
Yeah.
It's in your packets, July third and July fifteenth report from us.
July third.
To be attached to it, or is it in July fifteen?
There's, there's one here from,
That's something else.
This pertaining to, this is from Trueslaw. Oh, yeah, the third and the fifteenth.
July fifteenth, do you guys have it? July fifteen, All American?
Yeah.
Recommend we bring Rich to the table as well, or he's involved in this.
Rich, you want to come up to the microphone, do you mind?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so the note, certificate of occupancy status, Landon Kessler, and others from American Assisted Living. We have a report from Dennis Guntel in our package, he's going back, is it this Friday or Monday?
He was just there on today.
He was there, he was there last Friday and submitted a report this morning.
Okay.
Did we have his report or no?
Yeah, July fifteenth, it's the second page.
Oh, it's in page, and there's also a note about impact fees, still outstanding for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two seventy?
Three twenty-two seventy.
You're aware of that, right?
I just found out this afternoon, and you'll have the check tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, Rich, were you out there with Dennis?
I was not, but I've read his report, we've talked about it. So there's, these gentlemen are in a situation, they need to have an occupancy permit so they can submit, and, tell me if I'm wrong, guys, so they can submit to the state, satisfy the state permit process for assisted living facility. Talked to Dennis, this has been a long drawn out project, it's been very frustrating for him and I because some of the things that should have been done before we even put a foundation in still haven't been done.
Okay.
They're not earth shattering, it's basically growing grass and spreading some loam and making things right, I'm pretty sure they're going to do that. I think from Dennis' my, from my perspective, and Dennis didn't fight me on it, if we can issue them a CO, the understanding is for their business people only, and that we not allow any occupancy in the building for, as far as residents, until the punch list is done. That would be my, my give.
How much of a bond are we holding now?
I think it's up to a hundred thousand dollars if I'm representing-
Hundred grand?
Somewhere around there.
Rich, what we're, what's left to be done, what do you think that would just, what's the ballpark of?
No clue, that's their business and, you know, they can figure that out. Well, if I made something, he's absolutely right, on the other hand, even if I get the CO from you guys today or tomorrow-
Can you do me a favor, pull that microphone, there's one on the table there, pull that forward, I think he's a pro.
Well, he's absolutely correct, even if I get the CO from you guys, whether today or tomorrow, I can't move people in unless the state comes in and inspects the building. Therefore, they're going to give me a license to operate, that could be a week or six weeks from now. So because state will not entertain anything that we have to do unless they have a CO in their hand. All I want to do is get in the queue, due to holiday season, the summer, a lot of people are taking vacations, that's what I'm trying to do. I can't move anybody in unless I have a blessing from the state.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess the concern, is that the case that some of these things should have been done before the foundations were even put in and that didn't happen, or?
So, so if I may, I'm Brendan, I'm the superintendent, I was in front of you guys in November, and we addressed the treatment swales and some of the other stuff that should have been done in conjunction with doing the foundation. But as of this date, I think it's misspeaking to say that those things still are not done. All of the trails, all of the swales, excuse me, are built and have established grass in them. So I think, Rich, unless there's something else of that nature that you're-
They're there, you still haven't got eighty-five percent coverage of your grass like you're supposed to have.
In the swales themselves or the entire site?
Swales, all the drainage structures, all the swales along the pavement. Again, that's not earth shattering, but it needs to get done. No, we are going to get it done, I mean, we- I'm sure you want to have a decent looking site. Of cour-, I mean- Bring people in, I understand. We're not only on this building, we also operate the building, and I mean, it's our best benefit to make it right, and we are going to make it right. I mean, we have properties up and down East Coast, twenty of them, and we don't run away from anything, I mean, we spent a ton of money on this project, and a hundred thousand dollars is not going to make us just walk away from this project. Not only that, but I have a retainage for these guys, over a million dollars, if they don't finish the work, they don't get paid. So, just a couple of quick questions, you know, I was talking when you guys first started. The sewer effluent pump, is that installed and inspected?
We have the control panel for the effluent pump, which is one of the pieces that we're waiting on. So tomorrow, George Roberts is bringing out the pump and they're going to do the startup. So I think we would be looking tonight from the selectmen to just get the blessing that once we have that inspection from Dennis and Pete, that then we would be able to get the CO with the, holding a bond on everything else.
I mean, Rich, have you seen Dennis's latest report?
Yep, I got it right in my phone.
Are you-
Yep, I agree with him.
Concur with the punch list that he's laid out?
Concur with the punch list that he's laid out, is there anything that needs to be added to that? Cause I mean, the way I see it, we issue a conditional certificate of occupancy with this and with what Dana Trussell has written here for the.
Hydrogel.
Sub, the air thing, whatever. But I mean, that would, you and I talked about this on Thursday and I, I think, as Rich said, it's nothing earth shaking, but we were here in November and I feel like we kinda got yah-yah'd in that meeting, so we wanna make sure that these things are getting taken care of.
You, you have my word, it will get done.
And the impact fees paid?
It will be the, it will be, I just found out one twenty-three this afternoon.
Okay.
That we have to pay impact fee and there, I wish I knew, I would have borrowed a check, I came from New York this morning, but you will have the check tomorrow morning. I asked for a credit card, but you guys don't take credit cards, so otherwise pay it on the credit card.
Oh, we do, but it's two point nine percent. Okay, there's somebody, um. Is that, is that a motion you wanna make Phil?
I just wanna make sure, does anyone else have anything, any questions? I make a motion that we issue a conditional certificate, certificate of occupancy based on the eight items from the town engineering consultant and, uh. I think there's.
We, we still need the building inspector to go out and, and make sure.
So I think, I think what, what, and if I'm not, you correct me if I'm mistaken.
No.
I think if we issue a conditional, that they won't even come out and look at it, I think that's the problem.
State will not look at anything other than a CO.
So we're, we're holding a hun- hundred grand, right?
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, if you don't have a railing on your deck, they're not gonna not put a condition, you know, I mean, but it still put conditions on it.
Oh, I, like, what I first offered was. Let Robert issue the CO when things are ready, when the effluent pump, right now they don't have a septic system that works, so, you know, we can't do anything today, maybe not tomorrow, maybe by Wednesday or Thursday it'll be inspected and be ready to go. But they, you know, somehow, yeah, a separate letter saying that they're not gonna occupy it with residents until the punch lists are done.
I, I can't even bring people without state coming to the building, state may not come six weeks from now.
So, so issue a sec.
State's not gonna see that letter, you're not gonna send it to them, you're gonna show them the CO.
He's saying, issue a separate letter to us.
That's fine.
Uh, indicating that.
That's fine.
That you'll get these done and we off, we.
Again, that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I, I mean, as long as there's some form of commitment.
Something in writing.
We'll give you the CO, but we still get a.
Mr. Selectman, I promise you, we're not going anywhere, I'm, I'm not walking away a twenty million dollar building for a hundred thousand dollars, I promise you that.
I, I, I got that, I just, we need to cover ourselves.
I, I got you, building itself, I'm worried about the building itself, the landscaping is least of my worries, which will get done. Like I said, these guys, John, is not going away because they owe million dollars retainage, I don't think they're gonna walk away for a hundred thousand dollars.
Do you wanna modify that motion? To a letter, to us holding a letter?
Yeah, I didn't get to finish it yet, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So anyway, I make a motion that we issue a certificate of occupancy with an additional signed letter from the applicant covering the eight items covered in Dennis' report and the items with regard to the walkway and the paved sidewalk and Dana Trussell's report.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the motion, how long do you think it's gonna take to accomplish those things?
I'll do it for you guys.
Yeah, the pumps getting started up tomorrow like Brendan said and then, uh, last the pavings Thursday and Friday, which is, then the seedings, yeah, this, the end of this week, we should have, our goal is to have all eight items crossed off the list.
Okay, because I, I gotta say, in the past, um, and I'm sure you guys are all great and many, uh, a man of your word, but it has been the experience of the town. When we've had contractors come in, in, in quite a few instances and conditional things have been allowed, things didn't get done, okay? And it's very difficult for us to pursue, uh, to retract a occupancy permit once it's been issued. You know, I, I know we've had that issue, we've discussed it with the planning board on granting conditional approvals and they really, realistically, the only reason they're done is to lessen your wait timeframe for the state.
Right.
Okay, because you wanna get it going, get in there as soon as possible and you're asking us to trust that you're gonna complete the work, so give me an occupancy now.
Right.
Right, that has come back to bite us in the past.
If, I guess it, it won't happen, but if that did happen, you would be more than covered on the eight items if you did pull the bond for the hundred thousand and change to complete it all at the bond's expense at that point.
Not only that, but not only contract, but I'm telling you as an owner, I'm not walking away from this building, we're not gonna just walk away for a hundred thousand dollars, that I can promise you. And you can call other towns, Massachusetts and Londonderry, see what kinda job we did, because the same building is up there as well. Not only that, but that, Mr. Briggs will come and get me.
I, I'm just saying, I, I'm basing it on prior experience that the town has had and everybody has the greatest attentions and, and it's been an issue in the past, unfortunately.
I, I hear what you're saying and it's not gonna happen here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, in your motion Phil, I assume it's, uh, provided all the inspectors sign off, right?
Yeah, and if I can modify that, that.
The electrical, the building inspector and, and all that.
And it would be tied to the bond, that those items will be complete, that we would, if they're not done, we will take the money to get them done ourselves.
Okay, you, you, uh, he's amending his motion.
I would agree.
Write that on the second?
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Gentlemen, if I could just clarify real quick, if we did what you just suggested in the motion, would we get Rich's sign off now still, just tied to the, the further clauses, or would we just leave Rich's sign off blank?
I'll sign it, as long as they.
Okay, gotcha.
I think you have three signatures left, you got?
I've got Pete's, yours and Robert's.
Okay, so are we all pretty clear on what the motion is, NSI?
Yes.
All those in favor of issuing that occupancy permit, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Fire station building committee, review of proposal from SMP Architecture. How you doing, Mike?
Good, I wasn't expecting the chief, but I know they're in training tonight, so they may or may not make it over.
Okay.
But, uh, I provided a copy of the proposal which we received from SMP in May and, uh, we've been waiting to bring it forward until we had the assigned purchase and sale. And, um, this is the work that we need to do with them in order to put together a little bit more comprehensive plan and a, and a budget. Uh, what we're, we'll be asking you to approve is the, the, not only the fee for them to do that work, but for them to work with us to, uh, engage a construction management firm. So that's, that's the alternate one. So that's, that will be a, an RFP process, where we'll solicit proposals from firms that do construction management and bring them on as part of the team. So that, that will be, we'll actually be selecting at that point the, the firm that will oversee the construction, uh, once this project gets approved. And their, their role is to work with the team, which is the architect and the building committee, to develop the budget. So that we'll have a proposal to bring forward, uh, in March.
I, I noticed one thing on here, the, uh, it's got a May fifteenth date, is that?
Yes, I have a, an updated copy.
Extension?
That is, they, we got this just today, uh, they've extended this till July thirty-first.
Anybody got any questions?
Well, I think that Shannon was asking earlier, as far as the design of it, this is, this is just preliminary, we're not setting anything in stone. I, it's just the general outside and the inside is gonna be, you know, determined later type thing.
Yeah, it's still gonna be a schematic design, where, where we'll go a little bit further is, I mean, we're gonna revisit the layout because the, the layout that's in the current concept, uh, especially as the fire department personnel looked at it, needs to change. Things are separated where it'd be better to have everything in, you know, more in the front of the building in terms of the office space and the day use space, have all the bays at the back. There's probably an opportunity to revisit the number of bays, um, and to really, you know, crunch through the spaces again to make sure that we have exactly the building that we need. And we'll be specifying things like level of materials, like type of construction, what the siding will be, what floor coverings will be, what grade. That, that's all input that goes to the construction management firm, so that then, when they're developing the budget, they know how to budget appropriately. We won't be picking colors, but.
But this will be enough for them to bid on, essentially.
Yes.
So, at, at what point, uh, are we gonna decide on the materials and the costs associated with those? You know, whether it's gonna be a wood structure, whether it's gonna be a block structure, uh.
That's part of this process.
Okay, so they, are they gonna give you different alternatives and say, okay, you know, if you're building out of wood, this is the estimated cost?
Yeah, I don't know exactly the dynamics of how that process works, but, you know, we will explore different types of construction and the associated costs and the committee will make a decision and a recommendation based on that.
Okay, the, the compensation, twenty-three, one hundred, and then I see inside it has hourly based on that, so is this twenty-three, one hundred, is that the maximum?
We believe so, yeah.
Um, and, but they're gonna bill based on these hourly rates? Is that a not to exceed price?
My understanding is that the, what they described as the scope of services, one through seven, is what's included in that, in that price. And then we'll add on the alternate one, which is them assisting us with selecting the construction manager. And that those are both fixed costs. You can see right at the, near the bottom of the page, says the fee above is a fixed amount for the respective scope of work.
So that, that's their, it's showing the rates and, and they're saying. They're saying the cost is gonna be twenty-three, one hundred, is that right? Based on those rates?
Yes, I believe so.
Board discussion? Anybody got any questions?
This alternative, or alternate service number ones, construction management selection, thirty-five hundred dollars. Is that like if they have to start the process again to?
No, that's, that's for them to work with the committee to develop a request for proposals, send those proposals out, work with the committee to review them and make, make a selection.
So that's not included in the twenty-three?
No, that's, that's a separate, I don't know why they broke it out that way, but.
Why, that is confusing.
Definitely, because up above it says, um, I guess upon request, and that's the cost.
So this up above, this is the alternate services upon request, if we want any presentations, they're gonna charge you eighteen hundred bucks.
I think there should probably be below the bottom, below the line.
If, if you want, um, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, at this point, we don't, we don't anticipate, we would need a presentation till next winter sometime.
Well, I, I mean. The, the plan is for them to support you in, uh, choosing a construction manager? So I don't know why this, I mean, you, we're just basically adding thirty-five hundred bucks to this twenty-three grand, right?
Right.
So it really isn't twenty-three grand.
Correct, twenty-six, six.
I guess my question is. If they're preparing the documents, or at least the budget and there really should be no, it should be kinda open and shut, you know, it's a. It's a set, set of plans to bid off of and do take, you know, everybody can do a takeoff off of, so it would just be the same as we just did here, where we're opening proposals and everybody knows what the parameters of what their bidding is.
Well, it won't be a fully developed set of plans, though.
But enough to bid off of, so we're comparing apples to apples when we open everybody's proposal. So we're comparing apples to apples when we open everybody's proposal.
But I don't think anyone is capable, it'd need to be an engineer for him to read through the bids, and it's gonna be a huge bid. And it's gonna be a lot of technical stuff, so I think that's what it is.
Yeah, 'cause engineers never screw that up.
What, what the, what the construction management firms will actually be giving us for a proposal is what they are gonna charge us for this effort, to develop, develop the budget. And then what they would charge us to oversee the construction. So that's a, that's usually a percentage of the total cost. Both the architect's fees and the construction management fees are a percentage of the, the total budget.
In the schematic design phase, number seven, attend up to two meetings with the committee. Don't you see that maybe there will be more meetings necessary, like with the public, or bring it to the board of selectmen to explain certain things? Up to two meetings, do you think that's sufficient? I mean, I, I could see that this person that's gonna design this is gonna have to go to more than up to two meetings, I would think.
I mean, the, the work that we've done up till now in the, in the preliminary phase, a lot of that was done by, by phone and by email without having to incur the cost for them to actually drive here from Concord. Trying to be as efficient as we can with the process.
You don't think they're gonna need to have more than two meetings to...
That's for, for them to come here two times. Probably, we, you know, we have a, a subcommittee that's working on the design and specification. Members of that subcommittee will, will definitely be traveling to Concord some to, to meet with them. And that's, there's no extra cost for that.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion, discuss it further, but to approve the contract with SMP engineer and have, architect, or rather, and have the chair sign necessary documents.
Twenty-six-six.
Well, ye, I'm sorry, for, yes, up to twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. And if there's any other fees, they would have to come back to us, I'd say.
And those funds are coming from? Where will those funds come from?
Impact fees.
And how much is in there now?
It's currently about fifty-five thousand in the impact fees. And we have some other things that we'll be allocating in the project, and we'll be coming back to you for that.
A second motion.
Discussion? No discussion?
I guess my only concern is they're, they're, in their alternative services upon request, discuss CM pre-qualification list, assist, review. It seems like, oh yeah, we, yeah, well, we'll discuss it with you, but I mean, I, I guess I just wanna be sure that this thirty-five hundred dollars that we're paying for, they are gonna be taking care of, like, they'll be grabbing the bull by the horns, reviewing all the bids, taking care of all that, and qualifying these people. This seems like they're, those are very vague.
Yeah, the, the way it was explained to us is, is that they, they do this process quite frequently. They'll provide us with a list of firms that they know that do construction management in New Hampshire. They'll ask if there's any firms that we wanna add to that, if there's any firms on the list that we don't wanna include. They'll develop all the documents and we'll just send them out and then receive the proposals back.
And what I would ask of the chair of the committee, I believe SMP has done several fire stations in the state of New Hampshire. They do have a good reputation and they've already done work for us the last go-around with plans and they came to town meeting and they made themselves available within the contract cost, I believe. So they, they've shown good faith to the town that they don't nickel and dime.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.
Do you have the updated one?
The chairman, if, while we're on the topic of the fire station building committee, the finance committee reached out to me. They're trying to see what's the will of the select board on how to go about starting, look at financing. And what he presented was four different options to me. One of them was strictly buying the building out using the dump fund. Another one was a hundred percent bonding. Another option was half of the money from the dump fund, the other half from bonding. And another one was do bonding and make the payments, but also use the interest out of the dump fund, which is roughly a hundred thousand a year. And all they're looking for is just some guidance so they can start pulling the numbers together. Obviously, we don't know what they're building, how much they would be bonding or anything, but they could find out interest rates on bonds and everything else. But they're just looking for guidance on which way to move forward and bring a couple more, bring the proposals back.
Discussion on that?
I personally, I wouldn't wanna see taking the money out of the dump fund. I, I would eliminate that myself. I don't have a problem with option four with the bonding and using the interest money from the dump. Which ties to, would cancel out two, just doing a hundred percent bond. So I, I mean, I'm in favor of option four myself, or even the bond.
What was four, again?
Four was bonding it, but taking the interest out of the dump fund yearly, which is roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year to buy down the bond.
And then paying, paying the, the principal on the twenty-year bond?
Correct.
Actually, I think our recommendation was to use the interest to pay the interest so that the taxes will be paying the, the principal.
Okay.
But it was a way to, it was a way to reduce the tax impact without touching the principal of the, of the dump fund.
I too would be opposed to option one. God only knows what the DES is gonna change the rules on if there's a whiff of PFOs in there and we have to excavate the whole dump. We need to be getting rid of that money.
Rich, Don?
I'm opposed to one as well.
I guess the others, I'd like to see kind of a chart of what we're, what we're looking at.
What it looks like over a period of twenty years.
Yeah, what it looks like over a period of twenty years. You know, when we did the library, or the school was a better example, it said this is the call each year for, you know, to have something like that, which you're gonna have to do eventually for...
Yeah, what, once we get a little bit further with, working with SMP and, you know, start to get some idea of, of a budget, then the finance committee will be able to reach out to the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and they'll, they'll give us a bond schedule. We, we got one, a preliminary one last year as we were going through this planning process. Rates have changed, of course, it's gone down, actually, so it's a good thing.
I know, and I don't know if it's a viable thing, we, I don't think we totally looked into it was, the option of the town. It'd have to be a discussion with the trustees on how it invests that, the money we currently have on the landfill fund. If in fact it could, it, you could, in essence, lend yourself the money and repay it there, as opposed to, so, almost like the town...
Right, we did have some preliminary discussions with the trustees of the trust funds about that. And I believe that there is not really a mechanism to do that.
I think the interest that that's earning is way more than what it would cost to do a bond anyways. The bond market's pretty low. So we'd be, you'd be taking that money out of the market and you'd be, so you'd be losing that interest that's doing. And I think that the fourth option is what capitalizes on the interest it's earning.
Yeah, that's, those options basically came out of the discussions we had, both as a subcommittee as, as well as, you know, with the trustees in terms of what's the best way to, you know, to utilize that without touching the principal.
Okay, well, I, I would say the consensus of the board is that the money not be used out of the landfill fund, other than the interest that is generating to offset the interest of, on, on the cost of the bond.
Okay, right, we, we'll work on developing that further.
What's that?
We'll work on developing that, that option further, once we have more information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, at this point, on our agenda, I'm gonna open up the public comment. I'm gonna open up the public comment. Mr. Koppelman.
Gentlemen, good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to use my three minutes of public comment time just to make a half a dozen clarifying points regarding a very long discussion you had at your last meeting regarding a business down at 125. I was not here at this meeting and had I known that, that that was gonna take place, someone from planning board, you know, myself probably would have attended. But I realize it wasn't on the agenda, so there was no notice of it. But I did watch the meeting, on, painful as it was, I watched the, it was a very long meeting and I watched it on YouTube. And I also, before I make a couple of, couple of comments, just wanted to recognize what I thought were, were two very good-positioned perspectives by two of the select board members. Selectman Coombs identifying what I thought was correct, that what you were being asked to do at that meeting last time really was a planning board issue and not a select board issue. And then Mr. St. James identifying that it was, it came in as public comment with no, no advance notice and probably should not have gone to the, to the length that it did, certainly not with a, with a vote and a decision at the end of it. But, and I realize it was a split vote, it was, it didn't go all one way, but, and that's, that's, that's certainly your, the prerogative of, of this board, your board. You also had public comment that, that indicated that the planning board was dragging its feet on an application and not processing it and holding the applicant up. I can tell you that isn't the case. In fact, the planning board does not have an application to act on. They had an application back in 2018 sometime. We went through a process and then we reached an endpoint with the applicant. And we couldn't, we couldn't get it to an endpoint, we couldn't get it resolved because the applicant and the board were, were discussing things and the applicant was a bit, a bit reticent about, about doing some things. And so the wintertime was approaching and the planning board told the applicant, if you want to do something other than what is on the recorded approved site plan, bring back an amendment by April. So you've got basically the winter months before all the outdoor season starts and, you know, get, get cracking on it. Come back in April, we'll deal with it then, and then you'll be ready for your high season in the summer. That never came. And you were faced last week with a, a lot of discussion about, oh my god, you know, the summer's already, already half over, blah, 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 we need to get, okay. So just so you know, there is no application right now pending at planning board. We're still waiting for an application to come in. And as a result, the applicant is only able to do what is on the approved site plan. And I was able to find some minutes from 2008, July 2nd, when Rick Corn was running, had taken it over from Pondview and needed to apply for a liquor license, had to go to the state and needed, needed permission to, to, to basically do some, do some serving outside. And the planning board at that time reported to the state and to Rick that the Pondview had apparently done some serving of liquor in the gazebo.
Excuse me one minute. Mr. Koppelman has exceeded his three minutes, is it the pleasure of the board to allow him to continue?
I make a motion to grant the public commenter ten more minutes.
I would second that, or I'd say allow him the same opportunity we gave the individual.
Oh, no, no, no.
I think ten minutes.
No, I, I real, I, I really don't want to rehash that and I'm not here for the purpose of doing that. I really just wanted to make some clarifying.
All those in, all those in favor on the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And three minutes goes very quickly.
Certainly does.
It does.
But an hour takes forever.
It does. So, so the approval back in 2008 to go along with the approved site plan allowed for the serving of alcohol in the gazebo and apparently in a part of the dining room that was a screened area. And it didn't define it specifically, but there is a letter that came from planning board to, to Rick Corn at the time. We can certainly provide that to you if, if you're interested. But, and just one more point is that if at any time this board, your select board, would like to sit down with planning board and discuss this particular application or any other application, just let us know. We're happy to come in, sit with you, happy to do a joint meeting if that's the way you wish to do it, or just to, or just to sit and chat about it, so, that's it.
You?
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion?
Not to flog a dead horse, but I think there was a lot of information that was not presented to the board while making that decision previously. Felt it was in violation of the procedures that we had recently adopted to prevent that kinda thing from happening. And frankly, the most upsetting thing about it is that the person there had the wherewithal to get eight people to come down on their behalf, but couldn't be bothered to be put on the agenda. And I personally feel that if we're gonna have a procedure and a policy for this board, we need to follow it. And if we're not, then I don't know why we even have them.
Okay. Any others to speak to it? The, the only thing I would add is, the board of selectmen is the enforcement branch of the town. We have been given requests in the past by the planning board on that specific location indicating that there were violations down there, the site plan. We followed up on those. We, it was brought to our attention that, that, you know, the applicant had said that, I, I've already been approved for this, I'm approved for the, what, what the prior operator had done. We weren't led to believe that. We, we were led to believe that the applicant had come in and they were given a criteria that they needed to follow and they refused to, and then they, so they weren't allowed to do a number of things yet. When we pursued it, there is a clause on the site plan that was recorded that basically says that they can do whatever the prior operator was doing on that site. They came into us with a... They came into us with a, a copy of the prior operator's liquor license, and asked for the board to issue a letter, not asking for anything more than, than what the prior operator had done. And unfortunately, we were in the position that the planning board had approved and recorded that they were allowed to do what the prior operator had done. And they had documentation showing that they were giving a permit from the Liquor Commission, the prior operator, for those specifics. And that's what we agreed with, and we issued a letter. Based, and we did it based on the recorded plan at the registry, saying that he can do whatever the prior operator had done. So, I, I don't think personally that we acted outside our capacity. We didn't, we're not the ones who authorized him to do what the other operator had done, but that's a document that unfortunately, we're gonna have to live with. And I think the position of the board, at least the majority of it at this point, is whether we like that or not, we're gonna have to adhere to what the recorded documentation is.
Just to add to that, we did talk to council in making that decision.
The only thing I would ask, again, I, we didn't have anything in front of us, but we did, I did drive by and I noticed, was that corral area out there with the previous owner, or is that new? And that changes things, because it's now turns into a whole, other codes and everything else. That corral area that he's looking to host outside activity. I don't think it was there beforehand, that's where I would defer to the planning board to make those determinations, but...
Okay, while we got you, Rich, we, we saw a purchase order in here on the paving.
That's one, hang on. And, so what you got in front of you, Mark, is four proposals. In a nutshell, brought seventy-six dollars a ton. There's gonna add the, add costs that aren't in that proposal. Bell &amp; Flynn, seventy-seven dollars a ton. Pike, seventy-seven, forty-eight. Benevato for eighty-three something. My recommendation to the board that it's not the low bid, Brock's is a low bid, seventy-six dollars a ton, but again, there's gonna be added costs that aren't in that proposal that we award the bid to Bell &amp; Flynn. For four thousand tons, you're talking less than four thousand dollars difference. And I'm telling you, I think they'll get a better job. And that's my recommendation. If you don't guys, guys wanna go with a low bid, I'll write another one for Brock's tomorrow. That's my proposal.
Who, who did we use to do Main Street?
This side... This side of Main Street was Bell &amp; Flynn, the other side was Pike.
The other side was Pike?
Yeah, last year we used Brock's for North Road, all the roads we paved last year.
Okay, and, and looking at all the roads that they have done in the past, which one seem to be holding up the best, and which do you feel has been the best quality of work?
I've said this for years, I think Bell &amp; Flynn, because they're a smaller company, they're more attention to detail, especially where a lot of these roads are smaller roads, they will give us a better job.
Clarification from the chairs, it, we don't have a policy for low bid, do we? It's, it's at our discretion, correct?
It is at our discretion. We reserve the right to accept or reject all bids.
So, as the liaison to the highway department, I did go and look at all these proposed roads with Rich, and I would concur with him that there are a lot of challenges.
Challenging roads.
Yes, very challenging roads, dead ends, non-conforming. And I think, in that instance, it is in our best interest to have who Rich feels is gonna do. It, it's gonna be a lot of traffic control nightmare, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of challenges on that job, and I think if there's more attention to detail, that's gonna be key.
Any other questions for Rich?
Not about that.
Well, while you got them, go ahead.
Conservation Department has made a request for trash bins, recycled bins, a green wood.
Yeah, no. But I don't know, don't you carry in, carry out?
Well, that's not happening.
Okay, enforce it. You do what you want. I mean, you want me to put them out there? Yeah, you could just tell me, I'm telling you, I, I think it's dumb. Because the next thing, you'll have them on planes, and...
Well, we talked about that.
Yep. Done that, been there, done that, folks. Read my book after I retire. But, anyone?
I'll, I'll go with a motion to...
I don't recommend it, because it gets abused, someone misses their, their trash day, they bring all the trash out, dump it in the barrels in the plains. Happened a hundred times. That's what you deal with. So, carry in, carry out, that's the state policy. State Park, there isn't a single trash barrel down there.
State Park doesn't provide trash receptacles?
Nope, carry in, carry out. Whatever you want.
Prove the 2019 paving for our district to Bell &amp; Flynn, as recommended by the road agent.
Second.
Any other discussions on the paving? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Does anybody wanna make a recommendation or a motion on the trash receptacles?
I'd rather discuss it at another time and see pros and cons, I guess, but...
Okay. Any other business for Rich? Thanks, Rich.
Good night.
Okay. Old business, what do we got on the old business? Anything?
I do have one thing. I did talk to the state, and they will be more than happy to come and host a educational meeting for the residents of Kingston on PFOAs. What they asked is if we could give them a list of questions that we would like to answer, or that they could anticipate being asked, so they could prepare properly. But they would be amenable to any time we want. I suggested probably like a Tuesday, Wednesday evening in September or October. They felt August would be kind of a waste, and people won't be here. But I would ask that, being Country Pond is affected by it, maybe we reach out to the Newton Select Board, make proper use of the state coming here, but they did ask that we prepare some questions. So, if everyone wants to think about questions and get them to me, I can get them to the state. Or get them to Susan, and I'll get them to the state, but is that okay if we, if I reach out to Newton Select Board and see if they wanna...
Sure. Is the primary, I, I think the Newton, their primary concern is probably Country Pond.
Correct.
And, I guess, I would think that, that maybe our primary concern is different than that, meaning being the downtown area.
Right. I think they'll come and answer all the questions, too.
Sure. Any objection to Kevin reaching out to...
Nope, sounds good.
And what about, does either September, October look better, or Tuesday or Wednesday?
I would say October.
I would say Wednesday, because...
Get people back to school, and...
Tuesday you have planning board, Monday you have fire station, and...
Wednesday and October.
Okay, anything else on that? Under old business, we have a facilities license agreement for the Kingston Plains. This is the Smutty Nose Brewery on the Kingston Days. Looks like July 27th to August 4th. We looked at it before, we were in possession of a certificate of liability insurance.
They're doing it four days?
Four days.
Is that what you said?
Two days, I think.
Well, the application says July 27th to the August 4th.
Yeah, I think that's a little bit over.
That's the whole, that's the whole Kingston Days thing that's attached. I think the year ten is just second and third, I think, if I can remember.
Must be on the binder, maybe?
There's a couple of things attached together there.
Tenement celebration, I say. It's also lists... I have their, they have their Liquor Commission license. Says August 2nd from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and August 3rd, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, I assume that's what, a Friday and Saturday night? So, it's August 2nd and 3rd, two days, and Lynn Ganty is a certified crowd control manager on file with the police and fire department.
Yeah, there's no officers scheduled to be there, so I would take that under advisement until I speak with Lynn.
I would just think we do a conditional, only that, like they did last year, they have an officer posted there.
Depending on the crowd, whatever they're expecting.
The location is the Kingston Plains Bingo 10, which is twenty by thirty. Number of participants they're expecting is two hundred.
At once, over the course?
It just says hours of the event, twelve to ten.
I mean, I think it went okay last time, and I don't have a problem, but I think there should be at least one police officer present for it.
Friday, August 2nd, and Saturday, August 3rd. How would you like to proceed?
I'd like to meet with them.
Motion to table that till our next meeting?
And in the meantime, you can
Sure.
Reach out to them and get any concerns
Second.
clarified. Okay, discussion, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? While I'll reach out. Get those questions answered. Kingston Days food vendors health inspector, what's that, Susan?
Phil wanted to bring that up.
So, we're discussing some things in the inspectors' meeting. We do have a, so, back when we reviewed the health inspector's job duties and descriptions, specifically restaurants had been excluded at some point, I think the discussion was back then that it was costing us money because they do the, you know, inspections or whatever, but the point was brought up that when the Kingston Days is there, or the recent Bonfire Brewfest event, we have all these vendors on our property that aren't being inspected. And the question was, A, what is our liability in that, and B, should we not have the health inspector inspecting those facilities to make sure that they're meeting at least basic sanitation requirements and all the necessary things? Now, previously, the health inspector stated that, I think up to three days, someone can be stationed somewhere and selling food products if they're of prepackaged nature, or something like that. And clearly, most of those vendors do not fall into that category, prepackaged. And also, for an event like Kingston Days that goes on for multiple days beyond the three, you know, whatever. So, I just wanted to bring it up to the board, if we wanted to expand that duty to the health inspector for Kingston Days, just given some of the recent events that we had last year, just to make sure that we're in the right, because it is our property, and it is our event.
Go ahead. At one time, you had to be licensed by the state to be a provider.
From all the, from all I understand of that, that's a very lax system.
Okay.
That's a pay your money and we'll never see you again.
What is it, three, three events per month? You don't have to get a license or something like that?
Well, I was told, because I thought about doing Kingston Days, that you absolutely cannot do it unless you're licensed by the state as a vendor.
Well, I guess my question...
They're enforcing that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Who actually, most of the food trucks do have a license, so who's actually checking to see they have a license? And then, I mean, just the basics of it, do you have some way to wash your hands? You know, I mean, doesn't have to be very involved, but make sure the truck was at one point inspected, their license is current, and that they have a way to wash their hands in there, or they're using disposable gloves properly. I, I don't think it has to be very involved, but just someone go through exactly what Phil's saying to just check the basics.
Let me call, make the, call the state DS.
Yeah, I think it'd be worth seeing what their parameters are for issuing a license, and what they wanna see in that type of temporary environment. And then, I don't think it's unreasonable for the health inspector, if he's gonna be working, you know, during, I'm not, I'm not expecting him to make a, a specific trip, you know, on a Saturday or Sunday, but at least during the week, during his normal hours, he can swing through there and just make sure everybody's properly licensed, and there's appropriate sanitation facilities.
Or maybe the state will even send someone down.
Or, yeah, they can, you know, someone who does that all the time, but I think in an event like that, over multiple days, we wanna make sure that we're covered.
I'll make that call.
Thank you. Any, anything else on that?
That was all.
Okay, committee liaison reports.
I brought mine up under the fire station.
I think we covered the rec department.
Oh, yeah.
In the non-public.
Yeah, I believe Paul has a
Yeah.
way to hire...
But that's, that's gonna be on the non-public.
Right, so.
No, but I mean, the, the incident we had.
With regards to the rec department, no, everything I understand is going great over there, as far as activities and everything. Highway Department, Rich has pretty much brought you up to speed on that. I've been attending the building inspectors' meeting, we're trying to do a little more formalized setup with an agenda, and just make sure that we're following up on any code issues that may come up, just so things aren't slipping through the cracks as much as they have been in the past. And despite me being late to the meeting on Thursday, we're pushing forward on that. Without bogging down the board on everything we talked about, I can't think of any major ones.
Where, I guess where would we be at it, looking at restructuring, not fee structure?
So, that was brought up, we're just trying to get this initial agenda for the meeting set up and get a flow going on, and then that's gonna be one of our action items, once we kinda work through the backlog of code violations that we've got going on right now. But it is something that I've talked to a few of the inspectors about, just because most of them work in other towns. They know what other towns are charging for fees, and that has been telegraphed to them, that we wanna bring ours in line with that. So, it's not a direct action item yet, but it, it's on the horizon, as far as getting their input for it and working through that.
Okay, anything else?
Couple of items. One, I'd like permission from the board to... Couple of items, uh, one, I'd like permission from the board to allow me to repair the gator. The amount of damage was forty-two, seventy, fifty-five, plus they'll take a thousand dollar deductible back from us, so it'll be thirty-two, seventy. Don't have any problem with carrying it.
This is, this is what they claimed had no damage on Facebook.
What was this?
The- To repair the gator.
This is the gator they burned up.
Oh.
So that's, that's the estimate from, uh, from the carrier. It's a thousand dollar deductible. The board's good with that. I'll get it fixed and back online again. That's our insurance carrier. They love to field these people too.
And where does the thousand dollars come from?
Does it? They, they deduct a thousand dollars from the check they send to the town. That's the deductible.
So the thousand dollars has to be made up someplace, right?
In labor, probably. So it'll be fixed free. You're going to fix it? Yeah, highway will fix it, is my understanding. Either that or you lose the machine. So I don't see any sense of
No.
That, anybody have a problem with fixing that, or we good? Next issue I'd like to bring up with you is, for probably seven, eight, nine years, we haven't raised, uh, the outside detail rate. Did a survey, worked with Cindy on it. Uh, she's recommending that we, uh, raise our admin fee from fourteen to sixteen. I'm recommending we raise our, um, hourly rate from forty to forty-five. Most of the area towns are doing, uh, fifty, fifty dollars an hour, some are forty-eight. But we're, we're on the way low end.
What are we currently?
Currently at forty. We haven't raised it like I said.
So we're currently charging fifty-four?
Yes, so it'll go to seventy-one. So I'm recommending we charge seventy-one, forty-five to the officer, ten for the rental of the car, and sixteen for the admin fee.
Set a motion.
Uh, no, I'm recommending that as the chief of police.
I will make a motion to increase the detail rate as stated.
Second.
Discussion. So what's the current rate we're charging now?
We're charging, um, forty dollars an hour for the officer, ten dollars an hour for the cruiser, and fourteen dollars an hour for the admin fee. So sixty-four.
Total of sixty-four. So you're going forty-five for the officer?
Forty-five, ten, and sixteen.
Sixteen for the admin fee?
Forty-five for the officer.
You raising the car, or no?
No, ten.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions?
One abstention.
When's that going to affect? Pressure pass that.
As soon as the board approves it.
There you go. Effective immediately.
Okay, anything else?
I have two non-public issues, personnel.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, if there's no, nothing else on, uh, liaison reports, I'm going to open it up for public comment on the second go-round. Anybody interested in addressing the board? Mr. Whitney, you got three minutes.
We have a age-old problem. Dory Road in Kingston, New Hampshire, uh, the contractor come in, come up, uh, I believe it was yesterday, uh, day before, with a unregistered tractor loader, smashed my front walls in my brim in front of my house, which is right next to my shallow well. And now the contaminated road water is going right there next to my well. So I'd like to have, uh, the town put a cease and desist on this person's operation because of contamination. That's, the federal law says you're going to be a hundred feet from all wells, all shallow wells. And this is less than thirty feet from where he pushed this side of the road in, pushed my stone wall in, and so forth. The, uh, the chief here, I believe, is not him, but one of his, uh, uh, officers went down there, and, uh, my neighbor tried to get the name, uh, of the guy that did it, and he, the police would not give it to him. His name was, uh, Wayne Young. And, uh, there's, he's going to have, somebody's going to have to give up this name, because I'm suing. I'm suing. I've had it. This guy is broken. Every rule in the book, dogload on the table, contamination, dust, speed, overloading, you name it. It's, 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 he's been very cruel to us, very, very cruel. I did testify him against him once, where he stole gravel from a company named True, and, uh, he lost that case. So he's, he's, his past is terrible. And also, the E P A just hit him. They kept it out of the town papers, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars for diverting a brick and public waterways. The guy's so bad, and now he turns around and bulldozes my land. No one stops him. Nobody stopped him. Do we have no authority at all around here? Nobody can stop this man. He does what he wants to. Regs every rule. No one finds him, no one stops, except EPA. But everybody else, he's somehow gagged them. I want to know what is going on.
So I can, I can direct, uh, that to the board.
Okay.
So, uh, Wayne Young called me today. I went down to, to, um, investigate it. And, uh, as you can see in those photographs, they had pushed, um, the dirt from the side of the road, and some of the walls, like you had stated. And, uh, took a number of pictures, and I went back and got together with Rich Singlier. And Rich had talked to, uh, Red Tormail, Tormail, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I guess what the problem is, that when the trucks get out, all the dust and stuff, and it builds up like a detention pond almost, to hold the water. It's not running off the road. So Rich had spoken to Red about they were going to need to, uh, do something on the edge of the road so the water runs off the road, because it's starting to break the pavement up down there. So, um, Rich said he was going to move some equipment down there, probably the, the mini excavator or the rubber tracks to try to clean it up. And then, this weekend, I guess someone took a piece of equipment out there and did this. And, uh, so I called Mr. Tormail. I told him there was a complaint by your neighbor across the street, um, and that he was working with Rich to rectify the problem. That's what I was told, so that was, um, as of, uh, early this afternoon.
Okay.
So it caused damage to both properties?
Well, uh, I don't know if you saw, both sides. So the dirt had mounted up on the sides, it was holding the water like a detention pond.
Tried to flatten it out?
Yeah, and they were trying to get the water to run off the road, so the road doesn't continue to break up. And so that's what, that's what Rich, uh, was concerned about. So right now, I know Rich is working with Tormail to fix the road piece to it. I assume at the same time, they're going to be looking at, uh, the neighbors' problems on both sides.
To those that don't go back in this board, twenty-five years, the town was ordered to fix that road. The town never did put in the drains, proper drains in the road, the, uh, for, for the draining the road. The road used to drain out towards the Terameo pit area. Now it's been elevated, and it drains on my land, my neighbor's land, and my brother's land. All the road residue goes on our property. It was not supposed to be that way. We all have shallow wells. And that's, those wells were in long before Mr. Terameo was in business there. But he is contaminating everything, and no one does anything about it. So it's going to be a lot of questions. Now, you people, only those who were in the board before are going to have to start answering, because I am suing. I'm suing, because the town has not fixed the road, has not done anything since they put a code on it. All the other roads in Kingston have been re-coded three times. They have never touched Dory Road. Who owns it? According to the, uh, thing we got, that the town of Kingston owns it down to the first corner. But no one will fill any holes, no one will do anything, but raise a lot of dust and make a mess. And that's the problem. No one's stopping them from speeding. I, uh, had a gun the other day, and one of the trucks coming down, I don't know, I guess we had a, I suppose, supposed to have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit or something. Went out there about forty-five miles an hour. Not Mr. Terameo's equipment, but these are gypsies that come in to buy this stuff. There's no limit. They go as fast as they want them. And the cloud of dust is so bad, I, I choke it out there trying to mow my lawn. That's ridiculous. This has gone on for a lot of years. I've had it. I've had it. I'm suing.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, why don't we, we'll run through some of these. I know we have a couple of non-public issues. Uh, let's run through some of the correspondence. We've got a question here. Uh, basically, there was an impact fee schedule, and he's going to take care of that, the assisted living. We briefly talked about that. There was the S M P documents are in there. There was a letter from a town assessor on somebody's property that a tree had apparently, uh, a cabin that was made uninhabitable. Um, and it talks about an abatement. And he's given a recommendation. We have a, uh, request from, uh, Ruth Albert to, uh, if the town charter could be displayed at the, um, library, the old Nichols Memorial Library? Or is it the Nichols Memorial? Is that the new library they want to put it at?
Oh, it's at Nichols, it's going to be.
The museum would again like to request board approval for the town charter to be placed on display at the Nichols Memorial Library.
Probably, probably next door. That's right, Usi Brad.
The museum or the new library?
Museum.
Okay. Uh, in previous years, the charter was delivered by the Kingston Police Department on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, prior to Kingston Days, and returned on Wednesday, August seventh. We were very lucky to have this original document to share with our residents. Please be aware that on the three-twenty-fifth celebration weekend, August second, third, and fourth, the museum will be hosting some colonial period crafters who will be demonstrating their talents. Some of the participants will be setting up an encampment on the Grace Daly barn parcel for the weekend. We would like to provide them with access to town, to water at the town hall. Would this be possible? So I guess there's two requests. One would be the displaying of the town charter. And the other would be making, uh, water available to these encampments.
Make a motion to approve both of them.
Second.
Is this?
Okay. We got a motion and a second discussion?
So we want to make sure wherever they're taking the water from, it's been tested, and not the outside taps. I don't think that's suitable for drinking. I don't think that go, does that go through the filtration system?
Is there a filtration system here?
I believe so. Not, I mean-
There is a U V system.
Right, but not, it, it's tested. The water is tested in the building.
Well, I, I, don't we post that it's not potable water, right? So I don't think, I, I mean, I don't think we ought to be making water and saying it's potable.
Right.
We have the water for those here.
Right. I mean, they can use it for other purposes, but not, not to drink.
Then just specify that. They'll have to go to the current library? That's the only really source of water we have. That's good, correct?
No, fire station's filtered, no.
Not the fire station?
No.
The rec center and the library, I believe, are the only two sort of-
Oh, for public, for public, that's right, that's right, yeah. You're right.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I would, uh, encampment. I guess I would have concerns about making the water available to them if it's not potable.
They can camp at Magnuson Field.
Is that water potable?
I don't know. We already got people camping there.
Well, there's no room then, is there?
No, I agree, Mike. I'm just saying, let them encamp, tell them they can't use the water here. Um, they're going to need to have to bring their own, or if they want to drink water, it's going to have to come from either, probably the library's best shot for them.
Okay. So everybody, uh, everybody's comfortable with the town charter? That was S M P. Uh, we had a veterans, surviving, um, spouse, veterans tax credit. What do you want to do on, uh, the appointment for Thomas Rogan? You want to just table that? You want to forward with it? This is for the fire station building committee?
Considering a while.
Could you let them know on the water that, that, you know, it's not potable?
Yep.
Okay.
Phil sign it.
What'd you say on the, uh, appointment?
He's going to have a hard time getting here. It's just, it's been lingering for a while. It's up to you guys. Do you want to just sign it without him coming in?
How do you want to proceed?
Why don't we let Phil in, we'll let him inspect this maybe, he sees him sometime.
Never seen him there. They're mowing grass now.
Just so, just so we follow our procedure, talking to people.
Actually, I would think, as Kevin is the fire station building-
Liaison.
Liaison.
Okay.
Perfect.
I will call, Susan, will you get me his contact information, though?
Okay, we have a notice of intent to excavate. This is on the Smallpox Road Apostle. Uh, we have an understanding with him, and he has filed for a, uh, permit.
They're actually going out tomorrow to videotape the road, so you've got a record of it.
Okay. We have a, apparently, somebody came to the town hall, registered a vehicle. And now they've decided to sell the vehicle, um, so Tammy is suggesting a refund.
Wow, I didn't know you did that.
No, I didn't either.
I've registered and sold in a month, and didn't know you could get a-
How much is it we're talking about?
Seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Anybody get interested? I mean, you, we, we could be opening up a-
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not sure if she's recommending so much, if she just said you can't do it, they'd have to ask.
I would, I would think because we have to at least address it, I'll make a motion to approve it. I won't support it, but I'm making a motion to approve it.
A second for discussion.
I think we need to know how many people are doing that a year, if we're setting a precedence.
I mean, I feel bad for them, but it's, we did the paperwork, we did everything. We issued a registration, um.
Hey, here's, you want me to read the letter? Says, Dear Sir, as I visited the town hall yesterday to take care of our July registrations, a few years ago, a friend welded his eighty-five Corvette. We pretty much used it once a year to bring our friend's daughter to lunch on Veterans Day. Last year, the car never left the garage. See registration stickers still- See, registration stickers still attached to last year's registration. I learned from my husband after coming home from the town hall that he intends to sell the car, hopefully by the end of July. Tammy Bakie suggested I contact the board and request a refund of the municipal fees of seventy-seven dollars as I mistakenly paid them as the Corvette will not be registered this year. Thank you for your consideration.
So it wasn't completely registered, just the town portion? Or did she do the state portion too?
Probably just that you only have the authority to refund this portion, so that's what she's asking.
So it was registered then?
Yeah, state fees were charged. Yep.
Is the motion a second?
Okay, all those in favor of, um.
Someone seconded it?
Someone seconded it?
Yeah, Richard.
Mark did.
Oh, Mark did, Mark did.
I did for, for discussion. All those in favor of refunding, um, registration money, signify by saying aye. Post?
No.
Aye.
No, standions? Denied. Okay, next, um. Okay, again, this year, we, we've got another, we've got a request for a rebate on, um, didn't take the discount on the taxes.
When did the date, when did they request it, was it past the date or within the date?
This was received June twenty-fourth. What's that?
They were in front of you at the last meeting, but we sent it back because we didn't have the note from Tammy on it yet. They were before the, the payment deadline, which I think is what.
Well, what is the deadline, didn't, wasn't there a Warren article that said that we won't refund any?
I think it has to be, they have to bring it to you before the payment deadline, which would be July first, I think.
It says that in the Warren article?
Well, I have to look at it, because the one I'm thinking of is in the December timeline, like it has to be by December first.
Okay, I, I think it. I thought it just spelled out that, that we weren't gonna continue doing that.
I think, I think there is a time cutoff.
I don't think you eliminated it, but there's a time cutoff.
I'd recommend you take it under advisement to find out what that cutoff date is.
This, this is the one where a mortgage company paid it.
That's the way it usually happens, because they don't take the discount, and the person realizes it and they can make.
Yeah, there's another one here.
Says it was paid June fourteenth, and the cutoff date is.
Do you want me to go get the, um?
July first.
The town, the book.
That'd be great.
Would she, would she apply for it?
Says it was, it says it was paid June fourteenth. If it's paid by June first, she gets the money.
July first.
July first.
But she should get the money.
When, no, when was the request made to get the refund?
June twenty.
June twenty.
So she's.
Okay, Susan's gonna, Susan's gonna look that up. We have an application for facility use for the Sanborn Junior Indians. Uh, football practice and possible games on weekends if high school is unavailable. This is for Como Field.
Is there a conflict with other people that have already scheduled? You don't know, right?
That I don't know.
It is the responsibility of the taxpayer to take the deduction. Deductions not taken by the taxpayer on or before the due date will not be refunded. That's what it says now.
So the due date is July first.
So read it one more time.
Um, it is the responsibility of the taxpayer to take the deduction. Deductions not taken by the taxpayer on or before the due date will not be refunded.
So she needs to ask her mortgage company for the refund.
Well, no, I, I mean, as I read that, if you realize that your mortgage company did not take the, the discount, but you figured it out before the deadline of July first.
She should get it.
It, it can be refunded. But if anybody catches it and it's July second, it's boo hoo.
Yeah, she. On the bad thing about that, you probably don't get a report from your mortgage company as to what they paid that quick.
Obviously, yes, she didn't, she would've had to have checked on it and see what was paid, is what I'm guessing. But I think maybe next year we just change it, say, any deductions not taken will not be refunded.
Yeah, I, I think that needs to be sewn up in the future, but I think that leaves ambiguity in it.
What's it say, once more?
Uh, it's the responsibility of the taxpayer to take the deduction. Deductions not taken by the taxpayer on or before the due date will not be refunded.
Okay, so they didn't take the deduction?
Right.
Now they're asking for a reimbursement because they didn't take the deduction.
Yeah, it is kinda weird.
I, I think the purpose of that was so that every year, administratively, we don't have to reimburse people because they neglected to take the deduction.
I mean, my mortgage company jumps all over the deduction.
Some do, some don't, I would rather change it, make it pretty clear if it says, any deduction not taken will not be refunded.
Yeah, because I think the intent was to give them only that month to.
Yeah.
To get it, it, it's not, doesn't sound right.
Well, I think the intent of it was to eliminate us from having to go back and refund people.
Right, but I thought it was only to go past that month period. But either way, if you want.
What do you wanna do?
Well, she applied for it before July one.
Yeah, but, well, that's not how I read it, but, okay.
Right, is this, right? She applied before July one?
She came to Tammy before July first.
Before the cutoff date.
And was told she had to come to us.
What about the other one?
There are two that are similar, the other one is, um, I think either from.
I think if she applied for it before the cutoff date, she should get it.
I agree with Kevin, we need to clean that language up.
We did, is there?
You hold it. It's a one-shot deal, you get the deduction or you don't.
Right.
And that's her mortgage company's.
You don't take it, there's no refunds.
Right.
Okay, this one's.
So you're saying if your mortgage company overpays it, you.
That's your problem.
Take it up with your mortgage.
And so that we don't do this every year.
Well, we have that. Okay, what do you wanna, uh, do on the, um, Sanborn Indians?
I'm okay with it if there's no conflict.
Second.
June twenty-fourth. This one is.
Between the hours of five PM and sunset. Because that has been an issue in the past with the western aisle.
Spray, spraying the fields and stuff.
Does it say?
Well, it's been them playing down there in the dock after the mosquitoes are out.
What about Chase Field, the one they own?
I think that's the conflict, that's the problem. The Sanborn Junior Indians is kinda like, uh, um.
A big football team, that thing's like ten acres.
I think that conflicts with the soccer or something. Because the school, I think, uses that for baseball, or whatever their other sports, the school's using it for field hockey.
In favor of me, you can sign it.
Okay.
This one's June twentieth.
This is, um, thirty-ninth Army Band Performance on August fifteenth, from six to nine. Submitted by Kingston Rec, Mr. Paul Butler. To use the planes in front of the, uh, fire station.
Yeah, send it down, send it. Very soon.
I hope that's right. That's a lot of work. What's that? Yeah. Yeah, but you gave it to me quite a while ago, and I didn't get it, it's on the map.
Can I find that one?
But I'm gonna steal Kevin's thunder here and say that you should probably have more than three selectmen spots on the facilities use application.
Oh, no, I can't, I'll look at it.
We got a request here from the, um, Glenn Greenwood, town planner, requested research. Brezner Hand Moving Company, Seven Marshall Road. I was asked to review the approved site plan to determine the landscape buffer required along Route one-twenty-five frontage for the parcel. The approved plan shows a thirty-feet-deep buffer area that was to be grassed and planted with eighteen trees spread out along the highway. So I'm not quite sure why, I mean, it's an ongoing project.
So. Rich, as the tree warden for the town, has told them, well, told the state or agreed with Unitil's assessment. When they cut, they kept right to the edge of their property, and what the planning board did was what they had for a buffer is actually in the state's right-of-way. The state owns the land, so they left all the trees in that right-of-way, or the, the state's land. And now they're all undermined because all the trees around them are gone. And one of them came down into one-twenty-five, so Rich told them they had to take it down. Unitil told them they had to take it down. The state wants them taken down, but since it's state property, they want Brezner Hand to do it. And Brezner Hand had said, they didn't cut them, they didn't do anything, they were within their rights, so. Um, the issue now for the planning board, I think, is gonna be, if they still want that buffer, they shouldn't have put it in someone else's property.
Right.
So, where that goes from here is, remains to be seen. But I, I don't see how we can. I, I mean, are they requesting an enforcement action?
No, it says request research.
That's being researched by Hampshire DOT, Unitil, Rich. I get involved and I can do the public safety issue.
Well, Rich has already researched it, and as the tree warden, he told them they had to come down, Unitil's told them they had to come down.
Well, how is it the planning board thinks they can impose a buffer on somebody else's property?
That's a sixty-four dollar question right now.
Why didn't they? Why didn't they, uh, restrict the applicant to the buffer on his property? Nobody knows?
As I recall that plan, and I have not looked at this, at it since this incident took place, but they were leaving essentially what the state owned as the buffer. And no one really thought of it at the time, but when all those trees came down and that buffer was exposed, trees started coming down and the safety issue came into play. So essentially, yes, like you said, Mark, they had a buffer on someone else's property.
So what research would they like done?
So when it comes down to, is this slid by the planning board, the buffer's part, basically? No one thought of it?
It's, without the plan right in front of me, I can't tell you exact.
Okay.
Dimensions, but that's essentially what it is.
Then we got, uh, Galloway Property on Five Roads still. The approved site plan for this property has been attached to this memo. In the area where the site plan shows a hundred and forty-feet stockpile with a height of fourteen feet, there is now a, a two-hundred-feet-long pile with approximate height, with a height of approximately sixty feet. I called Andy Galloway twice to invite him to attend a planning board meeting to discuss the material pile and wrote to him once by certified mail. The response to the letter was from Galloway's counsel and indicated the stockpile is part of the approved plan. Planning board had discussed this and believes the existing pile far exceeds what was approved.
Actually, the gist of the letter was, because the planning board chairman had gone out there and seen it, it was okay. Somehow you were out there in twenty-fourteen or twenty-thirteen for something else and it was all there.
We did a site visit, I remember that, everybody.
Yeah, so they say, because it wasn't mentioned at that.
At that time, it was well within.
And, so that was the other thing that they asserted the lawyer did in that, is said that, well, it's been there since then, and we promptly pulled up Google Maps at that time and less than a year ago, it was tiny. It has since grown exponentially since then, so. Are they requesting enforcement action on that, or?
Well, this is a general letter that says requested research. I don't know what, I mean.
I guess they're copying us as a courtesy?
No, it's, it's a memo to the chairman and members of the Kingston Board of Selectmen.
I don't know, I can't do anything to.
Okay, what I would do is take it back to the planning board.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
And just say to them, if, give us an enforcement action if that's what they're requesting on this. As far as the buffer, I'm not really sure what they're asking for.
I don't think there's anything to do with it.
Anything you can ask.
There's nothing you can do.
There were several times that that would happen, that they look at plans and.
On, on the Brezner Hand thing, if we were holding a much larger bond, maybe we'd be in a better position.
What are they gonna pile drive trees in?
Enforce that.
Well, on the plus side, the site work's already done, so you got whatever's in the, in the kitty still.
Sixty thousand to buy a lot of trees.
Sixteen thousand, wasn't it?
Uh, this was, uh.
Sixty-eight thousand.
State Department of Transportation conference hearing. It's, it's just a list of, it, uh, was May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, there was a work, uh, work group. This is the report.
That's the one I discussed with you.
Here to take a look at it?
That's the one I discussed with you last meeting. Senator and Lane.
These two? And then we have a letter from, uh, the governor. On fiscal responsibility.
Make sure you read that, Mark.
Okay.
It's directed at you, isn't it?
I'm sure it is. Okay, so we got, um, I didn't see the, uh, it's a request to keep the bandstand open during Kingston Days.
Did I get that to you?
It's in the back and it's not on the.
Oh. I probably found the last one and sent it over from the email.
This is from Debbie, I'm hoping that we.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I didn't see it. Do you wanna, you wanna allow the, uh, what do you wanna do on the bandstand? Everybody got the letter?
Yes. To be open.
Just open it up and leave it open for the entire period?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so. Uh, Ernie has the capability of opening it, apparently?
Yes.
So is the board authorizing him to open it for the entire celebration?
Do you wanna close it at night when festivities have ceased or?
You see the need for that?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
That's just gonna mean somebody making two trips a day there.
And that's when we had most of our vandalism during the evening hours.
Realistically, do you think that's, I mean, they can just.
Not with a bunch of people around.
They can just climb up the thing if they wanna vandalize it, right?
True.
You wanna just have, allow them to open it, leave it open for the entire Kingston Days period?
I'm okay with that.
Phil?
As long as nobody takes a header off of there and sues us, sure.
Well, that's always a risk. We good with that? Okay, you can have Ernie open it. Uh, this is a letter from. We got the, this is, we got this.
Make a motion to approve the min- the minutes of July first, twenty nineteen, both public and non-public?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I'm gonna approve these.
Well, that's why I passed them around.
Yeah.
Nobody signed them. Is that because we're not approving them or? Those are the refunds, yes.
Did you all get the email I sent this afternoon? I got something from you learning about the solar, the solar conference on the twenty-third. Just wanted to know if you were interested in sending anybody. I believe we can get one free entry if we, um, include our landfill project on their list to talk about.
Free entry into what?
It's a conference, a solar conference in Manchester on the twenty-third. It was a kind of involvement thing on the website, so I didn't try to prove anything out, but.
Someone wants to go, I'm one happy to say, go ahead.
Yeah, we wanna, um. See if anybody is interested, if not, we might go and get the information, but I'm not.
Do we wanna see if someone from the planning board is interested attending in our step?
I thought Glenn said he was gonna attend and he would report back if.
Okay.
I thought that's what it said in that mail, that email.
Oh, okay, yeah, I did.
But does he, is he going for another reason and we can still send another representative?
I'll ask him about it because someone like.
Are you saying you'll go?
I would go, but I don't have that kind of knowledge to really.
Well, I, I couldn't tell if it meant you would go or he would go.
I think I said I would, if, nobody else wanted to go, to go, if he wanted me to go for the information, but I just. I'd have to do some research first or I wouldn't be doing much good there.
Okay, we, we had, uh, I guess, let me see.
Do you want me to ask if anyone from planning just wants to go? Would that be all right, just to send someone as long as it didn't cost money?
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Sure. Uh, this was. Tammy Bakie from. She sent a request, I guess, to the, must be the help desk. It says, uh. I have a customer that wants to register vehicles to his business but have been notified by the building inspector, he does not have a current business occupancy permit. Do I register his vehicle or not? Why is she sending this to us?
Because the person at the help desk, I think the top line on there is her answer is that she should bring it to.
Says this would have to be up to the town office as the town is the one that determines residency.
So this.
That's her office.
Okay, oh, so.
Well. I, I think we can have a say in this too, though. Because this is essentially a good tool for us to make sure that people are getting business occupancy permits before we let them register vehicles there.
Is this the address?
Yeah, it's the.
John Hobbs, Jack's Tone and Service and Auto Repairs, P O Box four seventy-two, class style regards five Route one twenty-five. Mr. Hobbs, this is a letter from, uh, Glenn Greenwood. I was asked by the planning board to take a ride by your business to check if you are complying with your approved site plan. It appears that you are parking as many as eighteen vehicles in the state of New Hampshire, Route one twenty-five, right-of-way. The site plan for your property does not allow vehicle parking in front of your property line. It appears that all of the vehicles parked in the area in the front of your row of parallel display spaces do not comply with the approved plan. Please remove these vehicles at your earliest convenience. In addition, you presently have neither a business occupa- business occupancy permit nor an approved signed permit for the business. Please contact the building inspector.
That's enough to say no. There you go.
I, I think. Tammy wanted guidance.
I, I think it comes down to us that determine residency, not Tammy.
Well, and, but we also.
I think that's the kind of.
This allows us to enforce a lot easier. If someone's gonna get into compliance real quick if they wanna register a vehicle. That's my personal thought on it. I think that's what we should do.
I'll just respond no, okay?
Very eloquent.
All right. I think the, uh, any other business before we?
One last thing, I will be gone the first week of August. We don't have a meeting here that week, but I have a historical. Me, or no, conservation meeting, if anybody wants to cover it. I don't think it's a big deal if you don't, but. It'll be mainly talking about, uh, Kingston days on three twenty-fifth. That's the only meeting I think I have that week.
Anything else?
Enjoy the four eight.
That'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting. We will be adjourning to non-public session to discuss personnel issues. Thank you for watching and have a good night.